Very much. All right, so we're gonna get ready and begin. Thank you all for attending. Attendees, audience, and panelists, which are our candidates. This is a tough job that you're looking to take on, and I really respect you all and appreciate your concern for our community. So, first question, and I'm just gonna start with, in, you guys can answer it however you want, but the first question is, do you support short-term vacation rentals as an opportunity to increase revenue for the city? And hold, keep your thumbs up and thumbs down for a bit. Amory, we can't see very much of your face, which I assume I can't see your thumbs up or thumbs down. Casey, maybe a little higher. Perfect, thank you. Matt, I don't see anything at all. Matthew Harper, gotcha. All right. Do we all have our yeses and nos in the chat box? So I'll give you a moment to do that. Be sure to put your yeses or nos in the chat box, please. All right. So the next question, I'll give you a moment to think about this as we're finalizing all of that.
Diane, if I may, and some of the responses I'm seeing more than yes and no, are we allowed to do that, or would you like to clarify the rules?
You can only answer once, and if you don't answer at all, we'll be showing that you've flip-flopped, vacillated.
No, but there's, there's more, some of them have more extensive answers.
Oh, yes, for everybody who may have joined late, I only want yeses or nos. There is no explanation here, and we will remove that from anything that we might publish later on.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Okay, next question. Do you support increasing revenue and all the different ways that could apply to help balance the budget? Yes or no?
Diane, does, if I wanted to say, I'm not, I don't believe in increasing taxes, so.
And the question is, the question, yes or no only. And in any kind of statements that you might make, you have the opportunity to enhance upon that if you'd like.
Can you restate the question, please?
Absolutely. Do you support increasing revenue to help balance the budget? Okay. Gracie, I don't see a yes or no. Amory? Okay.
I revised my answer.
Pardon me?
I revised my answer based on the clarification that Billy asked.
Got it. Thomas, do you have a yes or a no? Eric, did you get yours? I saw John's, I saw.
I typed my answer.
I'm trying to get in here.
Did you freeze on your guys' end?
Those stupid questions. Be respectful. Yes or no answers. You have an opportunity. Next question. Do you support cutting staff or services to help balance the budget? We need some more thumbs ups and thumbs down. Jeff, Thomas, John Briscoe?
Was that services or staff?
Both. Cutting staff or services. To help balance the budget. And Gracie? Do we have your thumbs up or thumbs down? And Amory, I'm, you're frozen.
I've been, no, no.
Thank you. Alrighty, and Tito, I don't know if I see a thumbs up or thumbs down. Thumbs down, awesome, thanks, guys. Gracie, did, I didn't see a yes or a no on yours.
I'll do it again.
Oh, no, that's fine. I'm not looking at the chat, so.
Oh, sorry.
For our audience to see the answers.
Okay.
The last yes or no, should the city of Huntington Beach host a navigation center to support homeless individuals?
My answer is yes.
Thank you, Amory. Billy?
A big yes.
Okay, sorry. Casey? Alrighty. And Jeff, I saw yours, right?
I believe so.
Perfect. Alrighty, so this is it for our yes or no questions. Okay, thanks, guys, very much. And I'm, I'm going to mute everybody, but then unmute in this order. Eric, Gracie, Thomas, and Casey. That sort of rhymes, sorry. So Eric, Thomas, mute. Chamber staff, if you could mute everybody, I don't know how.
I think we should mute ourselves.
Gracie?
We want Eric, Gracie, Thomas, and Casey to be able to speak for right now.
Okay. Gracie's unmuted.
All right, then we'll start with Gracie, because you were the one that was at the top of the, or no, Eric, are you unmuted?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, so Eric, this is your opportunity for your three-minute opening statement.
Are we doing three or two? Two minutes, I'm sorry, Diane, was it three or two?
Pardon me, two minutes.
This sounds a lot like when I addressed the city council, we went from three to two to one, all within 10 minutes, which was unfortunate.
When I sent it to you all, it was in, it was two minutes, I promise.
I knew, I just thought I'd run with a three if nobody noticed it, so. Yeah, my name's Eric Silkenson. I'm not gonna give you a big stump speech on everything, because you can go to my website, silknumber4hb.com, so I'll address stuff that has to do with the Chamber of Commerce. Before I went and got my teaching credential last year, I spent the bulk of my life in the restaurant business, from server to bartender to management to restaurants here in Huntington to everywhere. So I know what a lot of our local small businesses have to deal with. My wife, he works for a beer, wine, and liquor distribution company, so I have, both of us have a vested interest in businesses getting back up and running, but I'd like to see it done safely, which is what I told the city council. I think we could do a lot with the Chamber of Commerce and the city council in general hands-on to promote businesses that are doing things correctly. I don't know about enforcement and the logistics of that, but promoting businesses. I went to a restaurant for the first time last Friday. I ate at Sugar Shack, sat outside. I like what they're doing downtown with Main Street. I think we should open up a little more. But I believe we do need to get things up and running, but we have to do it safely. We have to have guidelines, and we have to make sure people are following those guidelines. And I think it's a great idea to promote businesses through the city and through the Chamber of Commerce that are doing things right, because those are the only businesses my wife and I have considered patronizing our businesses that are following the, the medical guidelines on reopening safely. And with that, I'm done with my statement.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Eric. And so now we'll go to Gracie. You have two minutes.
My name is Gracie Vandermark. I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for over 20 years. My husband and I, we have a blended family with seven children, which we, six we raised here in Huntington Beach. I ran for the Ocean View School District two years ago after finding some, discovering some concerning material in the new, newer adopted programs. And I am currently the Director of National Community Research for Informed Parents of California, where I connect parents with organizations and resources so they can stay informed regarding new policies or laws that can negatively affect their community. I am also a Finance Commissioner for the City of Huntington Beach, so I am familiar with the inner workings of City Hall, as well as the current and future financial challenges that we are about to have. There are several issues that I'd like to bring more attention to. One of them is our unfunded liabilities, which we are approximately $460 million into, and we're only approximately 67% funded. And we are the fourth-largest city in Orange County at the third-highest unfunded liability, so that's pretty concerning. I'm also concerned about the fix the pandemic has had on our budget. We've taken a massive hit on taxes as well as tourism revenue, and we need to come up with new ways to produce income where we, without raising the taxes. I'd also like to focus on attracting new businesses, as well as ways for us to be able to keep them here with us long-term.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Gracie. Thomas Leparn, you're up next.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Chamber, for having us today. My name is Thomas Leparn. I'm a lifelong resident here in Huntington Beach. I've lived here 41 years. I have four beautiful children that are all in the school system here, Seacliff, Dewire, Huntington, Hawes. I went to Huntington Beach High School myself. I pursued my degrees in political science and sociology from UC Irvine, my master's degree from Cal State Fullerton. I've been involved in the community, very much so, for the last 32 years. I've been part of the Fourth of July Parade consecutively for 32 years since 1988, where I started as a Wee Below Scout on a bike. I've also been the leader of the parade. I'm also featured on the city website for the Fourth of July Parade. I have a lot of pride in this city. It's something that I take dear, near and dear to my heart. It's something that I've loved my entire life. It's the only city that I know. It's the only city that my children know. We have to, we must have people that are willing to roll up their sleeves and get dirty, not just say what they want to do, but actually do something about it. I'm a man of action. I get out and I actually clean our beaches, clean our parks. I put together projects that are free of charge using volunteerism as a way for us to make improvements to our city without costing the city a dime. We need to increase our revenues, but we need to be creative with those solutions. We have issues, and I've talked with many different parts of our city. And one of my major platform pieces is unifying Huntington Beach. I've talked with people from southeast Huntington Beach that are worried about the shop-off development, the Magnolia tank farm. We've talked about people being concerned about what's happening with our wetlands, where I'm a volunteer with myself and my family. All the things that I do, I want to be a voice to our community, and by doing so, we have a voice on the council. I ask for everyone's vote this November 3rd, vote three, November 3rd. Thank you so much.
Good job. Thank you, Thomas. And then next, we will go to Casey.
Hi, guys. My name is Casey McKeon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and introduce myself. I'm a third-generation Huntington Beach resident, lifelong resident, bought a home here two years ago to raise a family and continue on our HB heritage. I'm a small business owner that specializes in renovating shopping centers. Currently on the investment, I was appointed the Investment Advisory Board. I recently have been appointed to the Finance Commission. I had some, some life challenges last year that, personal with my wife, that put things in perspective that made me really want to, you know, step up and do more than just being on the Finance Commission and really give back to my community, to make sure that local citizens have a representation on city council. I'm very, very for small business. My mother runs the Pier Art Fair down by the pier on the weekends, and then my father runs the Beef Palace butcher shop at Springdale and Warner. So I really think it's a big focus this year from the pandemic, the massive budget hit we took, that we focus on reviving our small businesses, you know, giving them the resources they need to thrive, really focus on responsibly bringing back tourism dollars, our hotel reservation fees. I'm also a resident of southeast Huntington Beach, and, you know, I know we have a lot of big-ticket items down there, so I want to make sure those, those issues remain a focus, and the residents down there don't feel disenfranchised as they have currently. And I just really feel that's a big focus, is reviving our economy from the small business up.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Casey. So we're gonna mute the four of you, and I believe we should have John Briscoe, Dan Kelmick, Jeff Moran, and Natalie Moser as the next ones up, so we'll start with John Briscoe, sir. Oops, we need to get you unmuted, John. Hold on.
Some kind of mutant here. No longer a mutant.
No.
I'm John Briscoe, four times re-elected public school trustee for the Ocean View School District, including more than half of Huntington Beach, plus Westminster, Seal Beach, Fountain Valley, and Midway City. I have almost 16 years of governance experience in my trustee role, and that's important. Being a, a city council member is not like being on a commission necessarily. It's a place where decisions are made, and deliberation is conducted that counts and lasts for a long time, as Mr. O'Connell and Mr. Harper will attest. My background, I graduated from Cal State Long Beach with two undergraduate baccalaureates. I have a master's degree from Cal State Long Beach, an MBA from Clarkmont Graduate University. We've lived in Huntington Beach for decades and decades. My son grew up here, Marina High School, go Vikings, and my, my son lives back here again. My role in governance and governing with the Ocean View School District included the Republic Trash Dump lawsuit, I'm proud to say, where we compelled the stinking, filthy, rotting, putrid, fetid mess to be cleaned up. They gave our school district a $4 million gymnasium for the kids in Oakview. Our attorney was paid $2 million of hard-earned money, and they spent approximately $22 million, plus their legal fees, to close up the stinking mess. Unfortunately, it still stinks, but not like it used to. I'm proud to say I brought curriculum change to my school district. We have cursive writing required, and we have typing, free typing, available for all of our students. I'm an individual who sees things that need to be done, and I go out and get them done. And I'll do the same thing for Huntington Beach as a city council member, to the joy and delight of all. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. All right, Dan Kelmick. Unmute you. There you go.
Hi, everyone. My name's Dan Kelmick. Thank you, the Chamber, for putting this great candidate forum on. I'm so glad to see so many small business owners running for office this year. It's really kind of the backbone of our community. I've been running a small business in one shape or form since 2000, oh, actually the 90s. I was 11 years old when I started my first company, doing IT consulting, which is essentially what I do now, is an outsourced CIO/CTO, for the fact that companies hire me to do consulting for their businesses to help improve. I grew up in the community. I bought my house here 15 years ago, and I'm now raising my family here. I have a 15-month-old daughter who may come charging in here at any point, so I do apologize if that does happen. We're all working from home these days. We've got a lot of issues facing our city in the short term here. COVID, I think, over, overarches this entire situation in our city, and we really need to have a plan to hit the ground running. We need folks that understand how the city works. I've been on the Planning Commission for nearly eight years now. I know all the folks in City Hall. Been working on policies that, out of the Planning Commission, to help lower rates for internet costs and really try to make smart decisions for our city when it comes to development. My voting record's very strong on this, right? We voted against really bad high-density projects, voted in southeast Huntington Beach to protect the community down there from industrial, industrialization by leaving the zoning there as, as public, semi-public, which allowed for potentially another power plant or an enormous assisted living facility. That project will come back through the city council if they ever want to build anything there, but ASCON's got to get cleaned up before that. And then we have to deal with our homelessness, right? Southeast Huntington Beach, all the parts of the city, my, my neighborhood in the north side of town, we have a lot of issues with homelessness here. We need to get our navigation center up so we can enforce our anti-camping laws, get our homeless off the street, get them the help they need, and get them back to be tax-paying members of society. Short-term vacation rentals, we talked about that earlier. I only support home stays, so you rent a room out in your place. An increasing revenue, we need to expand the tax base. That includes short-term vacation rentals, cannabis, and looking at dark fiber and other broadband benefits for the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, and now Jeff, your turn.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Chamber of Commerce, for providing this opportunity for all of us to, to speak to the public. My name's Jeff Moran. I retired from AT&amp;T last year after a 40-year career, various capacities, from field technician and engineering through corporate management, corporate procurement, and national sales contracts. In those, in those roles, I handled more than $600 million annually, personally responsible for. In the last dozen years with AT&amp;T, I had responsibility for community and government relations throughout Orange County and built a lot of relationships, and still have those strong relationships with elected officials and staff throughout the county. Since leaving the corporate life last year, I joined my wife in owning and managing our small business, where we provide emergency management and disaster preparedness services to municipalities, education institutes, public entities in general. I'm very active in the community. I have been for dozens of years. Currently, I serve as Vice Chairman of the City's Jet Noise Commission. I also serve currently as Chairman of the Board for the Boys and Girls Club, and I've been on that board for 10 years. I also served four years as President for Coastline College Foundation. I still serve on their executive board, again, 10-plus years on that organization. I've, I've also served on various other Board of Directors throughout the community, Boys and Girls, or not, Girls Inc. of Orange County, et cetera. I have a bachelor's degree from Pepperdine University and a master's degree from Golden Gate University. I understand there's a lot of issues that we need to address, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Alrighty, and so Natalie.
Hi, my name is Natalie Moser. I'm a proud mom of two kids who attend Circle and Mesa View Schools. I'm a homeowner, a business owner, an appointed member and chairperson of the Huntington Beach Human Relations Task Force, and I'm also a committed community leader. I'm running because I want to serve our community. I care deeply, and I have the experience, curiosity, and moral imagination and leadership to make a real difference, and because the bottom of the ballot is just as important as the top of the ballot. As a native Huntington Beach resident, I have a strong personal interest in our city's welfare and success. I was educated in local schools and earned an undergraduate degree from history, in history, from Cal State Long Beach and an MBA from Chapman University. I built a successful career in leadership in the credit union industry before shifting my focus to small business, family, and community service. Over the years, I've seen our community rise to the occasion when one of its own is hurting. When my family was hurting from my own cancer diagnosis, we felt the support of our amazing Huntington Beach community. I regularly opened the front door to a smiling face in a warm platter of enchiladas for my family. People showed up and showed us what community, what HB can look like. Cancer took away my hair and my false sense of safety and immortality, but it gave me the gift of time and a sense of urgency to make the most of this life. Just like most people I know, I wanted to make an impact on my community, so I started showing up everywhere and all the time, from our school's PTO Executive Board to the City's Human Relations Task Force, to working on addressing the issue of homelessness. I started listening and learning, and I kept showing up, started introducing myself and asking good questions. And once people realized I was there to help, they started letting me know ways that I could help our community. And so I did. And so I do. And this is just the next step. Over the years, I built strong relationships throughout the community and the city, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve my community and to make my kids proud. I believe together, we can build a brighter future for Huntington Beach. Vote number 10 on the ballot.
Thank you, Natalie, very much. Okay, so we are now going to go to Oscar, Amory, Matthew, and Billy. So Oscar, I've unmuted you. Your turn.
So, good morning, everyone. My name is Oscar Rodriguez, and just like the rest of us, I'm running for Huntington Beach City Council this upcoming election. I'm number 15th on the ballot. I'm a lifelong resident of Huntington Beach. I went to our local public schools and graduated from Ocean View High School in 2012. I then went on to Cal State University, Long Beach, and earned my bachelor's degree in healthcare administration, where I learned the basics of economics, public relations, and human resources. I grew up in the Oakview neighborhood, which is central Huntington Beach. I helped my father run a youth soccer league in the city. Some of my early connections to business come from Mr. Roger Keating, who is the Business Academy teacher at Ocean View High School. It's a great program. I really recommend it if you have young adults at Ocean View High School. Currently, I'm an asset manager for a nonprofit in Orange County. I oversee 230 properties throughout the region, 60 of which are here in the city of Huntington Beach. I, in conjunction with our Executive Director and Deputy Director, oversee a yearly operating budget and manage assets over 20 million. I was also a co-founding member of CLO, which stands for Community for Innovation, Entrepreneurship, Leadership, and Opportunity, which is based right here in Huntington Beach as well. They have done some tremendous work in our city by educating first-time business owners and supporting microenterprises, which I wholeheartedly support. It is no secret that our upcoming fiscal budget, we are going to see some reductions in TOT and sales tax revenue due to COVID-19. I'm all about expanding entrepreneurship and creating new revenue streams for our city. A top priority for me is ensuring that we support our small businesses, particularly our mom-and-pop shops, in any capacity, starting with facilitating, with permitting, and business license renewals. I believe in social and economic equity in a way that we can support the businesses while supporting our local workforce and communities. Another top priority will be preventing future homelessness, investing in our youth. And I won't ask for your vote. I hope I earn it. Visit oscarforHB.com to learn more about, and contact me. Thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to sharing my ideas throughout the forum.
Thank you very much, Oscar. Okay, Amory, your turn.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm a candidate for councilman in 2020 and a member of the Huntington Beach Historic Resources Board. I'm speaking today from my apartment at number 8,102 Ellis Avenue, apartment 121. There's an old story about President Truman wanting a one-armed economist. Why, he said, because all the economists at the time kept prefacing their advice with, "On the one hand, on the other hand, this anecdote demonstrates the importance of a city council." The mayoress and the councilman can receive advice, but ultimately, it is their votes that change Huntington Beach for better or worse. I hope to be able to change Huntington Beach for the better. Vote for Mr. Amory Hanson, number five on the ballot, a historic choice.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. And now Billy.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. My name is Billy O'Connell, and I want to thank each and every one of you for participating in this forum today, and thank you for stepping up for city council. For those of you who do not know about me, I was born in New York and raised in Ireland. I came back to New York when I was 17 years of age by myself. I worked two jobs, paid my way through school, and graduated St. Francis College in Brooklyn. In 1990, I came to California to join the LA sheriffs. I was a sheriff for several years, where I worked with some of the most violent people that this society has ever encountered. I worked like, with people, the Menendez Brothers, Rick James, OJ, and folks like that. I was a city councilman in the great city of Huntington Beach, and it was a good experience, and I've given back to the community. But before I share more about that, I will also share, when homelessness wasn't a shiny issue, I started an organization for the tailgate of my pickup truck called Colette's Children's Home, where we've taken over 5,000 homeless women and children off the streets. We reunified over 300 children with their mothers and helped over 1,500 women find work. We also started the savings program, and since we've started tracking savings of people that have come in unemployed, they have a combined savings of over 1.8 billion. When I was on city council, I advocated for small business. I, I helped streamline the permit process, so it was easier to do business in our city. I advocated for, for getting rid of Roundup in our parks, for, in order to save our children from toxin and pesticides. I also advocated to save our, our beaches and protect our beaches. That's just some of the things I've done. But moving forward, we're going to be faced with, certainly with some very tough decisions in the future. We're going to have a decrease in revenues, and how do we turn that about? We need to streamline processes. We need to encourage business, and we also need to start giving, giving a process where we can have some of the employees retire a little early so we can help people. I'm Billy O'Connell, and I would appreciate your board, and thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Matthew, you are up next. Oops. Matthew, unmute yourself. I can't.
There we go.
There we go.
My name is Matthew Harper. I grew up here in Huntington Beach. I attended our local public schools, including Virginia K. Booth Fundamental School and Stacy Intermediate School at the north end of town, and Huntington Beach High School. My wife, Elizabeth, and I are homeowners in Huntington Beach. We graduated from Huntington Beach High School. I then attended the University of Southern California, earning my degree in public policy and management. I successfully served 12 years on the Huntington Beach Union High School District Board of Trustees, four years on the Huntington Beach City Council, and four years as our local representative to the California State Assembly. As Mayor of Huntington Beach, in 2014, I saw through the completion of our new skate park, led the groundbreaking of our new senior center, repealed several outdated nanny-state laws, including the fireworks ban, and defended our beach bonfire rings, and celebrated 100 years of surfing in the city of Huntington Beach. I'm running because I have the experience and qualifications to help our city move forward responsibly through tough times. I love Huntington Beach and will defend the people of our city. My priorities for Huntington Beach City Council include public safety, infrastructure, economic development, administrative and fiscal accountability, property rights, personal freedom, and opposition to higher taxes. I pledge to protect Proposition 13, and I'll fight for local control, and I respectfully ask for one of your three votes for Huntington Beach City Council.
Thank you, Matthew. And so we'll finish up with Brian Burley and Sonia Green. And Sonia, you were late arrival, you were just in the open-ended, excuse me, we're just in the opening statements. You'll have two minutes, and the timer that you may have seen occasionally will count down. You'll have two minutes, and the timer that you may have seen occasionally will count down, and we'd like you to-
Tito as well, Diane. Oh, Brian and Sonia.
Sorry, Tito. I knew, I was only thinking of after you. I apologize. We'll go to Tito next. Sorry, Brian. Okay, Tito, you are up.
Well, I'm Tito Ortiz, born and raised in Huntington Beach, California. Come new via Mexico, home of vacation. This is something that we did six months ago before this COVID-19 thing came about. But being a long-life resident here in Huntington Beach, you know, I'm looking forward to representing my hometown of Huntington Beach and leveraging my unique ability to preserve against the unsurroundable odds, overcome multiple obligations when going to get tough. My core is about to protect our city and ensure there's constitutional rights will not be infringed upon at all. We lived through a historical difficult time in our lives, and I'm tired of watching helplessness from afar when I know I can make a difference and a positive change. Huntington Beach is starving for strong leaders, but cannot be influenced by special interests. And that's one thing I will refuse to do, is be influenced by special interests. I had the reason, excuse me, the resolve and conviction to step up and fight for law and order, for my family values, open our schools, open our churches, and small businesses, and businesses without Sacramento's dictatorship mandating, which continues to cause heartache and instability of our great city of Huntington Beach. And I will continue to do this if I'm appointed of city council. This is my first time running. I'm not a politician, but I am a hard-working American, and I've fought through my whole life to get where I am today. I'm living the American dream, and I want to bring the American dream back to Huntington Beach, and I will do that with my blood, sweat, and tears.
Thank you, Tito. Okay, Brian, really, now it's your turn.
Everybody can hear me? I'll thank you guys for having this. First off, it's great to be involved and care deeply about our city. My passion in life is public service, and that's why I'm running for city council. It's not something I thought I was doing a few months ago, but I'm passionate about public service, and I'm happy to be be in the ring with people like Tito, and this is the good ring to be in, of course. And I, you know, I'm passionate about our city, and I have a pretty simple platform. It's pro-public safety, pro-business, pro-fiscal responsibility. In terms of pro-public safety, my full platform can be read on my website, of course, which is brianburley.com. I talk about replenishing our police department's pre-recession numbers, getting more homeless dedicated. Police officers, we only have two, they usually have a background in social work. In terms of pro-business, my background's in business. I'm a small business owner locally here. I've stood with our small business owners on Main Street as well, and I know that they're struggling right now, and they need a leader that's going to fight on their behalf, and I'm going to do that. And then in terms of pro-fiscal responsibility, we can't do anything, probably for a couple of years, until we get a long-term financial plan. I talked about this two years ago when we had the same forum, that when I asked for the city for financial information for future fiscal forecasts, we're only usually budgeting one to two years in advance. They say they're going to budget fires. They don't even do that. We need a 10-year framework, especially with COVID. We need a rainy day fund. We need to be prepared for the next COVID now, the next recession. That's what I said two years ago. We need to be prepared for the next recession. We weren't. So that's the leadership I'm going to bring to our city council forward-thinking. I've taken on the biggest special interests back in our city two years ago. They're also no longer trying to influence our elections anymore, so I have a proven track record to take on the special interests. Number one on the ballot, my campaign is for the people, for the city, and for the future of Huntington Beach. I greatly appreciate your help and support. Vote number one, Brian Burley.
Thank you, Brian, very much.
Thank you.
And then Sonia. Can you unmute yourself?
Don't think I can get the camera on, though. I'm so sorry. I don't know if the camera's on.
We don't see the video, but you have the floor.
All right, thank you. I am Sonia Green, running for city council. My first time run. I'm very excited about this opportunity. I'm extremely passionate about Huntington Beach, about our city, our state, our country. And I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for 14 years. My biggest concerns that I have is fighting for our constitutional rights. I am against government overreach. I support our law enforcement. I am against defunding any law enforcement. And I am for cutting red tape for businesses where they are able to continue to grow and also encourage entrepreneurs to also want to build within our company, I mean, our city. And having other companies also interested in building their businesses as well in our city that will help promote growth. I'm concerned about our children. I'm concerned about their ability to grow up in a way of normalcy, attending school and getting past this pandemic and returning to what they should be doing, playing outside, communicating in the classrooms openly and freely, and learning the best way that they can. I guess I also am definitely very concerned about our homeless population, because I see that as definitely a security issue as well as safety, not only for residents, but them as well. So I'm also interested in definitely learning more about fiscal responsibility while providing safe and securing growth to our city, our residents, and our children. So in a nutshell, that's who I am. I am very passionate about what I believe in, supporting our city council. More importantly, my issues are very concerned with our residents' voices not being heard, and I believe that I'm the one that can act, connect with them, and help them get their voices heard and fight for them appropriately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Sonia. Okay, so now we're going to go into open-ended questions. We're going to have at least two, and depending upon the time, we may have a third. But we're going to start, and I'm just going to go a little bit in the middle of the group that just spoke. So the last people have a bit of a rest, and then we'll go around the horn, so to speak. So I'm going to start with, let's see, Natalie. So if, let's make sure we get you unmuted. Perfect. So the question will show up on the screen so you all can see it, and if we need to refresh it for anybody, we can. But this way, we won't have to keep repeating the question. So the first question is, how would you plan to take care of the deferred maintenance needs at some of the 77 parks currently in our city with the revenue challenges due to COVID?
That's a great question. Yes, thank you so much. I'm going to open up my screen so I can see the question a little bit better, and I see part of it.
Okay, we'll work on that. Thank you, Natalie.
Sure, no problem. Okay, so there we go. So how would you plan to take care of the deferred maintenance needs at some of the 77 parks currently in our city with the revenue challenges due to COVID? Well, I think that one of the things that we would need to do, and how much time do I have, by the way?
Two minutes.
Okay. I think that what we need to do is, number one, look at the resources that we were using before, and then also identify potential increased resources moving forward. So, you know, our parks are so important to our community. I know that with the COVID crisis, there's been a bigger challenge in our parks, not just because of, you know, reduced amounts or resources to be able to clean them or keep them up, but also from the perspective of homelessness as well. So I think that we have an opportunity, not only to, you know, make sure that we have resources to clean things up, but also to really focus on correcting those other issues as well. So if we're able to clean up our parks by also implementing our navigation center or homeless shelter, we'll then be able to, you know, be able to divert or divert resources to the parks and not have to provide as many for that. You know, I think that keeping clean parks is so important to the families of Huntington Beach. I know that my kids like to be able to head out there, and it's just immensely important. So I want to make sure that if we do work on the homeless problem, implementing a navigation center, getting our homeless off of the streets, out of our parks, you know, into a compassionate wraparound services, I think that that will help alleviate some of the strain that is on our parks as it is now. And hopefully, we'll be able to identify additional ways to be able to fund those needs as well.
Terrific. Thank you very much. All right, and we're going to go through Oscar, Amory, and Matthew now. So Oscar, you are up.
Yes. So what I would do is, as an asset manager, what I do is I typically prioritize emergencies, so things that we need to fix now, and hold some of the projects that we had in the pipeline. That's one way to save money. I would also, we have some CDBG funding and federal funding and state funding coming in through the city. I would support allocating some of those so that we don't cut the, some of the maintenance that we have on our parks. I run every day, try to run every day at Central Park, Beautiful Park. I know that we have some work to do, but at the end of the day, I think it all comes down to how we can sustain the parks without hitting our general fund. And so what I would do, like I mentioned, is prioritize emergencies and focus on keeping the parks safe for our communities to enjoy, especially right now with the heat. A lot of our families are using these parks on the daily, and so that's, that would be my answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Oscar. Okay, we're going to go to Mr. Amory Hanson next.
Yes, well, I am a big champion of parks. I have, I'm sorry. As a matter of fact, I just recently attended Matthew Helm Park to watch the Independence Day parade. I have also been a strong advocate for part-naming the Michael Rogers Center, keeping the Michael Rogers Center's public land and retaining a name there, Mr. Rogers' name there. And as a member of the Historic Resources Board, I'm responsible for deciding part-naming issues. I personally would like to see the parks all be renovated ideally. I recognize we're in some pretty bad economic times, but I am hopeful that perhaps it won't be as bad as people think. I think we are in a, if we can get our economy reopened by the end of the year, which hopefully we can with a vaccine, we might be able to at least have only one or two fiscal years. But I do think we have to also recognize the importance of the volunteers who have dedicated their lives to helping the parks. We already have Mr. Engel and the Huntington Beach Tree Society with Central Park. I'd like to see something similar to that for the other parks, so.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Hanson. And Matthew Harper, you're next. Need to unmute yourself, I think, sir. There you go.
There we go. In terms of addressing the deferred maintenance needs, it's really a prior, a matter of budgeting, responsibility, and discipline when you're maintaining your priorities during the budgeting process and during all the fiscal processes of the city, including making sure that we understand our long-term plans and our long-term objectives when we're negotiating contracts as well. When I was on the Huntington Beach Union High School District, for many years, the school district was going through this cycle of going through contracts, and it was overpromising what it could afford, and therefore, what was happening is the infrastructure, the maintenance, and also many of the other positions fell by the wayside because it was overpromising. We were going through a budget cut cycle every year for about half the time I was on the Huntington Beach Union High School District. That paradigm ended up changing significantly upon hiring a new superintendent, but it takes good financial leadership at the executive level at the city to be able to address this. But more importantly, it takes financial discipline and responsibility from among the city council members to be able to make a difference on this issue. I've been through different cycles in local office in Huntington Beach, on the school board, and then on the city council. I've been through good times, and I've been through recessions. But it all boils down to making sure to make good decisions and keeping your long-term plans in mind. My education comes from the University of Southern California School of Public Administration. So my background in accounting, finance, and the other process of government has served me well in terms of being able to address these kinds of issues at the school district and at the city as well. I will say also that it's important that we also make sure to address homelessness in our parks and be able to clean up that as well as a part of our maintenance in our city parks.
Thank you very much, Matthew. And next, we will hear from Billy O'Connell.
Okay, very good. Look, the way I look at this is, we live in the greatest country in the world. We live in a great city, and we've got great parks, and the question is, how do we raise revenue? So basically, I would aggressively pursue going out, looking for granting, looking for sponsorship opportunities. Down in Southeast Huntington Beach, when they were having issues with homeless, I went down and spoke with some of the residents. And basically, we had more police patrols, and basically, we had more garbage respect that was there to clean up the parks. So when you look at the sidelight Ashcon, when they were having issues down there, I went down, I spoke, and I advocated for the neighborhood down there. So what do we do? We form partnerships with businesses, with corporations, and give them the opportunity to participate to make our parks better, and I think that's one source of doing it. Grant writing, going out seeking grants for your parks. I think that's another opportunity. And if we streamline the budget, where, you know, moving forward, it looks like several employees will be retiring soon, and that will open up the budget, even though we're going to have tough times ahead. I think budgeting will make it happen, but I think you're going to have to figure out a way, which I know it can be done, because I've done it in the nonprofit world, to raise funding and sources to build up our park. Look, you're looking at a guy that has signed paychecks at both sides, front and back, and created business. We live in a great community, and one addition, I would say, to that, we have a lot of visitors that come into our city, over $12 million a year. Sorry, over $12 million visitors a year. And what we need to do is, we need to figure out a way how to capture more funding from these people that visit our cities. Because I see some people coming in, and they contribute a little to our city. So I believe there's opportunities where we can capture revenue for our parks and our facilities department and all the other essential services in our community. So that's the approach I would take. Balanced budget, more credits than debits, and we will be fine.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Tito, you are next, and then we'll have Brian and Sonia.
Great. Thank you very much. I actually got an opportunity to go out to Edison Park, right across the street from Edison High School, as being a graduate of Huntington Beach High School. Going back there, it made me very, very sad to see how much the maintenance was down. Number one, maintenance needed to be done in each and every one of our parks, and from the worst to the least, and we've got to find a budget to make sure to take care of that. Number two is the homelessness. I have seen the growth of homelessness from park to park, because I do take my kids to these parks. I have three boys, and I want the safety to be there. All of a sudden, you're looking down, you're finding a needle on the floor. You need to find a way to stop this from happening, and I think Huntington Beach can take care of the homeless to a certain extent, but we need to find the right budget. If the budget doesn't come from the city, it needs to come from the state, but it cannot come from the state. We need to get help from the federal, and I think it's very, very important to make these things happen for our city of Huntington Beach to continue to be safe and clean, because those are my two main goals here, along course with the police force of protecting our city. But each and every one of these parks, there is some beautiful parks, but at the same time, when I walked to Edison Park, I was very, very disturbed by how the park was ran. It was just dirt everywhere. I was going dirt, trash everywhere. Stuff has ran down. I spoke with some of the ladies that were there. They said they can't bring their kids here due to the homelessness. People using drugs right in front of their kids, right in front of me, and it was very disturbing. I left that day, and I was just beside myself. How can I help the city or the parks be different in a better way and a matter for our children's future? Because the future are our children, and that's what my number one thing is, and I want to make sure that our parks are safe. And I'm going to make this happen. I'm a fighter. I've been a fighter my whole life. I wouldn't be sitting right in front of you guys right now, and hopefully, we could come together as a team and make Huntington Beach great again.
Great. Thank you so much, Tito. And Brian, your turn. Oops, unmute you.
Sorry about that. It's a, I got a wireless mouse. I'm trying, I use it on my lap here, but it's not working too well. So this is an infrastructure issue. Of course, we're supposed to spend 15% of our budget, according to the city charter, and I found out recently that that's more of an average over a set number of years. That can't be happening. One of the main things that I'll try to push for is make sure that we spend that 15%, that we're transparent about it, that we have annual reports showing where each of those parks, the improvements that are made, what is needed. In my platform, I talk about completing a higher percentage of our capital investment projects. I think it's important that we continue to invest in our infrastructure, especially over the coming years. We're going to have, of course, decreasing revenues because of COVID, but we can't neglect our parks. So I'm a very big supporter of our parks. I frequent them often, and I want to make sure that we maintain them. And this gets back to, you know, once again, what I said in my opening, which is that we need a long-term vision for our city. We need to set standards for our parks and maintain those standards. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, very much. Okay, Sonia.
Hi. Okay, again, I'm sorry about my camera. Okay, I, while working on the longer-term goals and to making sure that our parks are safe, clean, and people can enjoy them, my immediate concern would be, what can we do now? And my first thought would to implement and organize a community volunteer outreach project in where we can encourage donations and sponsorships, i.e. adopt a park, and those things of that nature. and where we can encourage donations and sponsorships, i.e. adopt a park and those things of that nature. The most valuable part that I see in a community involvement like this is that the, the community working together, being able to strive for something that they themselves enjoy and building something for their children, which I think over is, is definitely the, the goal that we're trying to get to, the common good for our children. So I would say for my immediate need, I would be interested, definitely, the, the homelessness is definitely a problem that would need to be taken care of in, in some form or fashion, which I believe it could be. And with the navigation centers, that needs to be addressed immediately. But again, instead of waiting for funds, which I think is a, a good thing that we're projecting that, but immediately organizing a community volunteer or outreach project that I would be great at spearheading. That is my thought.
Great. Thank you very much, Sonia. And so now we're gonna move to Eric, Gracie and Thomas. So Eric, there you are. Well, can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Okay, so I've heard a couple of things that I agree with here. We're gonna have to prioritize, first of all. The, the money's not gonna be there to do everything we need to do. I mean, we're talking about deferred maintenance. We're, we're not necessarily talking about homelessness. That's, that's a whole nother issue, I think. Of course, there are homeless people in our parks and that needs to be taken care of. But as far as deferred maintenance goes, I think corporate sponsorships are great. Home Depot, Boeing, different, the companies here, also volunteerism. There's lots of people who would love to help maintain our parks. I probably spend the most time at Lake Park because that's closest to me. But remember, we have a massive park that runs from Beach Boulevard all the way to Golden West, and that's, that's our city beach. There's work that needs to be done there. But we're gonna have to, first thing we do is when we get elected is sit down and prioritize what needs to be done. I don't know that we'll be able to do everything we want to do, but like Brian said, having a long-term plan first and then prioritize what needs to be done then. So I, I definitely think there's work that needs to be done at the parks, but I don't think it's all gloom and doom. I think our parks are still in pretty good shape. But I'd love to see more volunteerism and I'd love to see court, like we, we talked about the skate park is the Van Skate Park. Why not Home Depot, Lake Park? Sponsorships are great, brings in that corporate money. And then you have the corporations and you have the people with a vested interest in keeping the parks clean and nice. I've been to the Edison Community Center in that park too. I, I grew up playing hoops there. There definitely needs to be work, but I think it's, I think we're gonna have to look for different solutions to that, some stuff that's outside the box because we're gonna be dealing with tough times. But I want to make sure we're transparent when we do it. Let people know what we're prioritizing. That's what I would look for. I think looking for corporate sponsorships would be probably number one thing that I'd want to do. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Okay, Gracie, what are your thoughts?
Well, due to the financial shortfalls that we're going through now, we will continue to go for, for several months to come. I think we need to look at all the resources available to us, including our community members. If we can allocate some of our city funds for the parks that are in the most dire need, maybe we can engage the community. Because as we've seen lately, we have a lot of community members that are willing to come out and help. Some can help with resources and sponsorships for materials while some of us can go out and take care of the parks that are less of a dire need or in a condition that maybe we can help. So having the city focus on the issues that are bigger, that need the, the bigger maintenance issues, and then the community can help with whatever it is that we can for the others.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And Thomas.
All right, so.
Sorry, I, hold on, Thomas. You unmuted yourself and I did at the same time. Apologize.
Fantastic. Parks and beaches are near and dear to my heart. I spend a lot of time at our parks, especially with park cleanups. I've been active with the Bolsa Chica Wetlands for the last 12 years, done over 3,500 hours worth of service with the Bolsa Chica Junior Stewards. I've done Central Park cleanups pretty much every weekend. About two weeks ago, we did an Eagle project for the Adventure Playground. We removed over 6,000 pounds of debris. We cleaned up the lazy river there. We, we replaced the dock, cut down the weeds and trimmed the trees, all free of charge, not a dime spent to the city to have 50 volunteers that we got together to go do that. I've been doing park walks with our community members. I'd like to give a shout out to the homeless awareness group. We've been over at Bartlett Park. We've been over at the Edison Community Center. We've been at Central Park, Lake Park, touring the wetlands. And just recently, as you all remember, the fires we just had at the wetlands was a travesty. I'd like to give a shout out to our Huntington Beach Fire Department for doing a wonderful job in keeping that fire contained. So a lot of that, which my family and my scouts have planted, watered and seeded, thankfully was not destroyed. But these are some of the very real issues we have with the homeless population that are camping, that are setting fires because they have their encampments and their cooking and whatever they may be doing illegally in our wetlands and our other precious areas like our parks and our beaches. I've been part of Save Our Beach with Seal Beach. I've also been involved with the beach cleanups, the Save Our Beach for Huntington Beach. I'd like to implement a Save Our Parks program where we could have community adoption. I, I would love to have community involvement where we have volunteerism and also corporate sponsorship. But also, we have pursue federal and state grant funding that's available to local municipalities because we need to be good stewards of our own community. God bless.
Thank you very much, Thomas. Okay, so now we will be going to Casey, John, Dan and Jeff to finish this question off. So Casey.
Guys, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of deferred maintenance issues in the city that need to be addressed, including the parks. The main factor to address those is obviously our budget. And with the pandemic that's occurred, our, you know, our budget has been decimated. So I fully believe that every line item in the budget needs to be reviewed and looked at to see if there's any flexibility. Or we can, you know, trim up some waste, get more lean, focus resources where the community feels it's important. But like I said earlier, I mean, the main way to increase our revenue that will help our budget is to support our small businesses to increase our sales tax dollars, hold up reservation fees. I'm adamantly opposed to increasing taxes to our citizens. So the only way to, to get our budget healthy again is to, again, support small businesses, increase our sales tax revenue. That will then give us flexibility to allocate those resources to the items that the community sees fit, such as deferred maintenance to our parks, et cetera. In the meantime, there's opportunities to maybe pursue private public partnerships, volunteers, donations. So those conversations can be had to see if the committee wants to get involved themselves, donate their hard-earned money. But at a minimum, our focus should be on increasing our, our sales tax revenue to the city by supporting our small businesses.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And let's, Mr. Briscoe. Unmute yourself, please, sir. I'm not sure.
There we go. The devil's always in the details. The top line with our parks is that our parks are shabby. They're shabby. I live by a park, rear park. Big giant dead patches of grass, unwatered, giant big patches of mud or dry dirt or mud alternately depending on the season. And the response from the city, because I've raised the issue, is, oh, ducky doo doo. Ducky doo doo all over. Ducky doo doo. It's all the ducky doo doo fault. And I go, that's a bunch of doo doo, ducky doo doo, if you will. It's poor sloppy maintenance, poor sprinkler maintenance, poor follow-up in person by staff from the city to supervise our hired-hand vendors that we bring in. Our parks are shabby and poorly managed and administered first and foremost. Second, a lot of the parks in the city don't belong to the city. They belong to the school districts, my school district and Huntington Beach City School District. These parks are really fully parks with hills and trees, a little swing set nestled in the middle for a, for a mom pushing a perambulator. Those days are gone. Moms at work and the kids are in childcare. What children need today are flat level playing fields. Twenty, 25% of our city is made of families and their children by population, although kids can't vote. And we need to provide what those families need, and we're not. The city has no spine. They put in a, a lazy path through the middle of the park down off of tile street instead of playing fields. It's a, and, and then the school districts provide the playing fields. And the city provides no park services. So when you say parks, you have to say parks and recreation and full park services. And the city provides none. They took out all the allocation and service for the kids. We have a lot to do with our parks, our park services, and providing the kinds of services and fields that our community needs, flat, level, square playing fields. All work for all those things, maintaining our parks.
Thank you very much, John. And Dan.
Oh, thank you, everybody. I heard a lot of folks talking about what the actual problem is and didn't hear a lot of solutions. A couple of folks actually identified it, but we kind of went around in circles on, we have to set up a budget, we have to do this. Yeah, that's all obvious. That's all obvious that we have to make a budget for this. But how are you gonna figure out how to do this, right? A parks conservancy is the solution, right? That's involving our folks, private enterprise, everyone getting together to come up with a cohesive plan to do that. That's raising money. So we already have loose affiliations across a lot of our parks. We've got a bunch of groups working in Central Park, the Tree Society, a bunch of different independent groups at each, at each park. I don't have a park in my neighborhood, so we have to go and use parks in, in other neighborhoods with my daughter. And so we need to set up a parks conservancy, right? It's, or adjust our budget from, from the city side, right? As a planning commissioner, I worked very hard to help get our housing compliant or housing element back into compliance, which qualified us for state funding. While we were in that fiasco of lack of leadership on, on compliance, we've lost nearly a million dollars in ability to fund park, park projects and park maintenance. Additionally, as a Bolsa Chica Land Trust board member, I really thank Thomas for all of his time and his kids' time being out there with our junior stewards program. I've been treasurer and vice president of that organization, preserving open space. I was on the negotiating team to preserve the last 11 acres of Bolsa Chica. And so we really need to focus in on, on what those revenues are, what those revenue raises are. And I think that's gonna be private money. It's gonna be state dollars. And we can't necessarily rely on those, but we need to all support the parks bond that went through Prop 68, which, which passed two years ago, and support that, this open space. I've been a big advocate for open space in my career, voted against a project in Sunset Beach that would have turned open space into housing. And then also remember that our, we do have Sunset Beach as another one of our park and, and open space areas. So you want to make sure that when you're looking at folks, you want to check their, their open space credentials and what they've done in the city to maintain that open space and what they've done to try to find additional funding for that. The Bolsa Chica Land Trust, under my stewardship as a treasurer, has raised nearly over a million dollars in funding to maintain and purchase property and maintain open space. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dan. And so we'll finish off with Jeff. There you go.
Thank you. So as Dan indicated, we've, we've heard a lot on some of the issues, but we haven't really identified how we're gonna do it. And I, as indicated earlier, one of the first steps we really need to do is do an analysis of what that deferred maintenance and, and upgrades are required. And not just a, a short term, but a long term. We need to prioritize what those upgrades are and the costs associated with it. We need to establish a long-term plan and budget. You know, certainly homeless, the homeless impact is, has been throughout all of the parks and, and many of the residences and businesses as well have, have basically surrendered those parks to the homeless. However, the reality is we had approximately as a city, a $4 million surplus coming into this year. And, and now we're running a deficit of about 14 million. You know, you're pushing a $20 million swing there. And we don't have a plan in place for, a long-term plan in place to address the real issue. We don't have diversification. I know growth is always an issue within the city in terms of building, but that type of diversification actually offsets when you do carve-outs for park improvements and such from the builders. We, our opportunity there is very limited. So we need to improve the business climate. And it's certainly been adversely affected by the COVID crisis. You know, hopefully, we can swing that pendulum back pretty quickly, but really, it's, it's increasing the tax-based revenue, not additional taxes, because additional taxes don't solve the issue. Again, collaborating with corporate corporations and grant opportunities are wonderful. Volunteers are wonderful, but that's not gonna solve the problem or address it as a long-term issue. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Jeff. All right. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate you being so timely with your answers here. And so we're gonna move on to our second, and most likely it's going to be our last question of the day. And we're gonna just go backwards in our group. So we'll be starting with Sonia, Brian and Tito on these, just so you know. I'm trying to give everybody a break in between all this. So the second question, is there a vote in the last 12 months that you would have made differently from the council majority? What is it and why? So Sonia, you are first up. And we'll put the question in chat as well.
No, I can't say that I, I would change any votes that I had voted for. I may not have got what I was voting for, but I stay steadfast in what I was hoping to achieve. And from what I understood was being presented. So I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sonia. And Brian.
So I think if you look back at the council meetings, the one that I spoke at, I believe it was April 20th, I talked about formula getting a plan to run our businesses all while keeping our vulnerable safe. You know, a month later after that, Peterson put a agenda item to reopen businesses, deem everybody essential, which I would have voted in favor of. I would have had a, a different approach. And, you know, we have agenda items and we oftentimes don't have council members trying to get things passed. I mean, that's the one thing that we should be trying to do is work on behalf of the business owners, people that are, are losing their houses because they can't make payments. So my pandemic approach is on my website, brianbrill.com/covid. I, that's one of the, that's the agenda item I would have changed and I would have tied reopening capacity rates at our businesses to the hospitalization rates of the local and county hospitals. And then we would evaluate it on a 10-day basis. If, if hospitalization rates are going up, then we go back down to say from 50 to 25% capacity. But I, I think it's really tough to, to shut down all our businesses, people pouring their livelihood and their blood, sweat and tears into their businesses. And then, you know, people on our council, on our city council saying that this can, let's, let's revisit this in two months. And then waiting for the county just to reopen everything. And then case numbers went up, hospitalization rates went up, and then everything's closed back. We have to have our own local plan to keep people safe, to keep our businesses is open. And that's what I'll do when I'm on our council. Like I said, it's on my website, brianbrill.com/covid is my full plan. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And Tito.
Yes, to be completely honest, over the last 12 months, I haven't really gotten a chance to dive into the exact laws that have been passed. But as I get deeper into this, I'll give you an honest answer because I can't sit here and say I know everything because I do not, but I will learn quick because I'm a quick learner. But as far as have I, as I've seen people reply, the small businesses have been a huge part of, not only my family, but a lot of my friends' family and working over 30 years to build their businesses to where they have became right before the COVID-19. I think anybody get right, right back to that place again by reopening in a safe environment for the community of Huntington Beach.
Thank you very much, Tito. Okay, Billy.
Yes, there's a couple of, there's a, there's a couple of issues that come to mind. Two is, one, with the COVID, I believe we should have strongly, strongly advocated for our businesses in a safe manner and advocate against the state, I believe, in local control. But another thing that comes to mind is the pipeline project. I believe the city should have done their due diligence on that project before they went out and bought it and then ended up selling it at a, a huge discount. It cost them to taxpayers thousands of dollars. And when you look at this navigation center, everybody's, well, many people are saying it's a, it's a housing crisis. It's much more than a housing crisis. We need mental health beds. We also need treatment beds for people that are self-medication, that have mental health issues who are using drugs. And what I would also put out there is people, there is people out there, when you do offer them help, they don't want it. And then they get to go out into the community and, and break the law and get away with it. I filed an amicus brief in the federal courthouse in Santa Ana against the county when they tried to push people from the riverbeds into our city with no solutions. So this is some of the things that we gotta look at and look at hard, because the navigation center is not a solution that's gonna fit everyone. Basically, there's a, there's a, the judge put a court order out there that we have to have, I think, believe it was 60 beds in order for us to enforce the law. And that has to be met. Some people don't want help and basically they should be held accountable for their actions. Recently, on Gata Street, I'm pulling out of my office over there and I see this guy walks down the street and just urinates in front of everybody for the world to see. This is not acceptable. You know what? I believe in helping people and I'll be the first one to do it. And I've helped a lot of people that wanted help. But the people that don't want help, that are out there committing crimes and, you know, bringing down the quality of life in our city, they need to be held accountable. Our kids should be able to go to our parks and play without being worried about stepping on a needle. So I believe that we need to move forward and get this done.
Great. Thank you very much. And Matthew and Amory and Oscar are next up. Matthew?
Thank you very much. And I appreciate the, the opportunity to be able to address this because I think that there's one vote that really stands out from this past year, and that was the vote in early April in regards to the multiple contracts that were approved by the Huntington Beach City Council. The timing was absolutely all off. At the very beginning of a pandemic-induced recession, I think that it was the wrong move for the Huntington Beach City Council to be approving three contracts for retroactive raises and raises going into the future. We don't know what the revenue situation for the city of Huntington Beach looks like, and I think that that was absolutely a mistake. As I said, now we're finally starting to get a better picture in terms of how this is going to have an impact on our economy. But at the point that was, decision was made, we had no idea. Now, don't get me wrong. I am very opposed to this effort to defund the police. I am in favor of defending the police and fully funding law enforcement. But I think that the, that vote was not done at the right time and I would have voted no.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Mr. Hanson?
Well, I agree with Assemblyman Harper on that item. So, and I had a toss-up between two, so I'm going to focus on the second one. And that is the, that is item 24 on the, on the July 20th agenda. And that was the temporary homeless shelter. I did believe that we need a temporary homeless shelter. I recognize that the council did at that meeting approve the Cameron Lane shelter as well. But I think having that temporary shelter on Gofford Street would have been beneficial as well. We have a, basically a situation where the judge has said we can't enforce, Judge Carter has said we can't enforce our anti-camping ordinance until we have a shelter. So the temporary shelter would have allowed us to enforce that ordinance most likely until, until and after we had the shelter on Cameron Lane.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanson. So Oscar?
Yes. So for me, it would be an emergency ordinance 4210, which is establishing temporary ban and certain ten and evictions for non-payment of rent. This would include small businesses as we asked. This was on March 31st. And as a city that has 42% renters, I think that we need to acknowledge that a lot of people lost their jobs and for the most part will be, will become homeless. So what we need to do to prevent homelessness is we need to ensure that we have a temporary ban on evictions for small businesses and renters. This is temporary. As we know, that 1/3 of adults in the United States are $400 away from being in financial trouble. So what we're doing here is preventing homelessness and making sure that people stay in their homes while we figure out, while the, the, the economic relief from the federal government, state, state governments come in. I think that we should have moved forward with this ordinance so that we could protect our renters in the city and also our, our homeowners who, who probably, probably would also not have enough money to pay for their mortgage. So that would be my, my answer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Oscar. So now we'll move on to Jeff, Dan and John. So Jeff?
Thank you, Diane. Yeah, I somewhat agree with Billy to the extent that there was a, some errors made when the council approved moving forward with the navigation center in, in North Huntington Beach there. But in my view, I think that was a, a great location for that site. It's primarily industrial. It would have fit the best in the, all of Huntington Beach in that location. I do think that council and staff did not complete all the necessary due diligence. At the same time, you know, I think we lost critical time. We really need to address this homeless issue in Huntington Beach. It's, it's horrendous. We've, we've lost some major time there and if we would have pushed harder from a legal perspective, I think we would have been able, in my view, although I'm not an attorney, I think we could have pushed forward with that site and it'd probably been up and operational by this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Alrighty, and Dan?
Thank you. I think that what really puts this into perspective is how we're having this forum, right? We're all on Zoom. Why is that? Because of the COVID-19 crisis. Nobody wants to get sick. No one wants to get their parents sick. No one wants to get their kids sick. That's why we're here. I would have, there's, there's a couple of things the council did at the early onset of this that could have gotten us to stay open and not have to close down for the length of time we've been closed down and keeping our businesses out and forcing the, our city to, to be in this crisis along with the rest of the county, right? The county is really, I think, left us an alert here. So that would have been to sue the state at the behest of the Newport Beach Hotels to open our beaches three days before we opened our beaches. It sets us in this spiral and I think it typifies where we are as a city, right? We need a mask mandate. We need folks being safe. We need to know that the leadership of our, of our city is following data, is listening to our scientists, is listening to our doctors, is listening to our ERs to make sure that we can get open faster, right? You wear a mask, we can get open. We need to make sure that it's enforced like Costa Mesa is doing. I mean, this is a hard thing to do. It takes leadership. But our folks are scared. Our folks want to know what the program is, what the plan is for our city going forward. And there's too many people from the president down to our local city council, we're not hearing what, what we need to do, what we need to do to get open. And that's what I want to bring to city council. We want to have a full plan in place to for folks to understand, we're going to wear masks until this number reaches this point and then we can stop wearing masks. We can get our businesses open. We can get the business regulation out of the way to get businesses open wherever they can be so that we can be safe. Because the number one thing that I'm concerned about is keeping our folks safe. That means making sure our police have adequate funding and adequate PPE. Same thing with fire, our lifeguards. And then making sure that our residents understand what they need to do, what the sacrifices we all need to make in order to save the lives of our Huntington Beach residents. Because that's the number one priority for me. And so I want to make sure that our council has a consensus to make smart decisions to save our residents' lives and to protect us from the COVID crisis going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And Natalie, I think I might have skipped over you, so I'm going to put you back in the middle here. So Natalie, there you go.
Thank you. I actually agree with Dan on all the things that he basically just said. But you know, that vote that took place at the end of April with a five to two, to file a lawsuit against the state of California, I definitely would not have supported that vote. At the time, many officials in the city and the county and other cities surrounding us had thought that we had flattened the curve. As Dan mentioned, we obviously have not done that. And I think more importantly, I feel like in lieu of trying to litigate everything, we have an opportunity to negotiate, which is what our city staff did, was when Oliver Chi went back to the state and negotiated with the state to determine a proper opening for our beaches. That was the opportunity that we should have taken at that time. I'm glad that we had our city staff there to do that. I think that public safety decisions should not be for political theater. They should be made collaboratively and through evidence-based decisions. And, you know, with that thought about kind of unneeded litigation, you know, things that Billy and Jeff had also brought up was the pipeline project. Perhaps in lieu of, you know, litigating in this type of environment with the mask against the state, maybe we should have pushed a little bit harder with that project to be able to make that go through at that time. Because if we had made that project move forward at that time, we would be in a very different position right now with our homeless population and being able to serve them with wraparound services and all of the other things that come as a result of, of still having our homeless on the street without proper resources. So yeah, ultimately it was that, that particular case.
Great. Thank you very much, Natalie. So now we'll go to John, Casey and Thomas. John?
No longer muted.
Thank you.
The biggest decision vote by the council was to sue me. It was stupid. They lost in Superior Court for dirty, filthy, secret hiring. They had a dump inspector who confessed in public form that he'd never stepped foot on the dump. Never. What kind of dump inspecting is that? Well, it's pretty crummy because we could stink, smell the stink from blocks and miles away. But anyway. So they, they voted, the city council voted to sue me in appellate court and they lost. Dirty, filthy, secret hiring is illegal. Then they voted to sue me into the State Supreme Court of California, RISCO V HB City, and the city lost. $80,000 legal bill. We settled for $60,000 and our city attorney claimed on social media, we only paid $30,000. I don't know why, but maybe it can add very well. But the, the point is bad decision, too many big legal bills, bad legal decisions. And that one was a really stupid, bad one because now I have the evidence and information that I need and we can open up their dirty, filthy, secret hiring and find out what's going on in our city. The other decision in vote is the homelessness decisions that the cities tried to take. They tried to stuff one of the homeless centers next to Marina High School in my school district up in the corner. It was not an ideal site. And they tried to shove it all over the rest of the city. Over 50% of homelessness relates to substance use abuse. That's alcohol prescription, drugs without a prescription, even, even marijuana can be tested for now and other illegal drugs. And there's another 40%, 50% that are related to mental illness and sometimes many of those are both. We need to treat those and a homeless shelter center place doesn't treat those. These people need to be given the opportunity of treatment and remediation. I would work for both of those. The city's not doing those. That concludes my comment.
Thank you, John. Okay, so Casey. You're up next.
Is it Casey?
Yes, Casey.
Yeah, so I would have, one of two votes. The first one that I would have voted for is I would have voted with Councilman Peterson to deem every business essential. Every business is essential. We shouldn't be picking winners and losers. There's safe protocols that can be implemented on the type of business to ensure everyone is safe and to maintain and ensure that those businesses stay open again. We need, these are people's livelihood. We need all the sales tax revenue we can get. There's safe ways to do that. So every business is essential. Also would have voted in favor of a temporary homeless shelter. It makes no sense to me why we would wait for the, the permanent shelter to be built. You know, again, I'm in commercial real estate and other length of construction. We could easily get a temporary shelter set up in the meantime and work with the county as a homelessness issue is, is essential in their purview. So we'll get the temporary shelter up, work with the county, make sure they live up to their responsibilities. So again, that's, those are the two that I would, the votes I would have changed.
Great. Thank you very much, Casey. And Thomas?
Okay, I've spoken at the city council meetings in regards to our homeless issue. I've actually walked the parks and met with the homeless themselves. I was with Joel Kirouac, who is a registered nurse, and we had personal discussions with homeless living in our parks. And some of them were found that they're not even from this area. There's some that are from Los Alamitos that we met, some that came from Santa Ana, some that were there from LA. And they actually have family there and we asked them why they wouldn't have the ability to contact those family members in return. And they said they've been cut off because of either drug use, mental illness, or the situation where they're living in our parks and our beaches and downtown. So the one thing that I would have supported is earlier, I, I'm really disappointed with our, the way we handled the pipeline issue. Would any of you feel comfortable losing $100,000 for your clients in any of your businesses? No. We have to be fiscally responsible as a council and treat our city's money as our own money. And I don't think at this point we've been doing that. And I'd like to be that person that makes those fiscal responsible decisions. We have a city attorney and I, I understand that when we have contracts, that would be the person that I would send it to. You know, we have to be responsible there because the Cameron Lane property is going to be a permanent shelter. And I, I support that because I do feel that we, we have the ability to get the homeless off of Main Street, off of our beaches, off of our parks, that we're going to actually have people that want to come back to our city and spend money. So it does support our businesses. It does support the safety, the public safety and the cleanliness of our city, which is super important. So I would have voted to have a temporary shelter at some point, just to have the ability to get out from underneath our federal mandate with Judge Carter. Judge Carter actually has the Carter House, which actually provides services to incarcerated individuals for drug offenses. And I would actually want to talk to him and understand where he's coming from, that we could implement some of those services for our city. God bless.
Thank you very much, Thomas. And Gracie and then Eric?
I personally would not have purchased the pipeline property without doing more due diligence, such as making sure that the property was zoned for the use it was intended to. I also would have had an appraise, an appraisal ran on the property to make sure that the value was worth what we paid. Be more responsible with our city's funds. I believe that those oversights did postpone our shelter from going up and it prevented our law enforcement from enforcing the laws and keeping our community safe. So that's, there's one thing I could have changed that would have been it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gracie. And Eric? There you go.
Okay, so what I would have done differently was the contracts, the pay raises. It's just not a great idea. You know, if I know I might be laid off, I'm probably not going to go buy a new car. It's also bad optics. It makes us look bad. The other thing I agree with a couple of candidates on is the, the lawsuit, the anti-mask, the anti-science. I'm a teacher. I'm around about 185 seventh and eighth graders daily. Well, I used to be anyway. I know about just germ transmission in general, so I thought it made us look bad. Also, the leadership, when, when things are going bad, people want to feel like they're part of a team and they're being brought together. The mayor would make videos and then we, I don't know how much money we spent on putting up those signs all along the cliffs there. So when I'd go surfing, I'd see these signs, but there was no enforcement. I think there was a one weekend where the, the helicopter flew over and told everybody to get off the beach. But there was never any plan for enforcement. You can go to my website, silkforhv.com. There's a video of me there talking about all these great plans to reopen, yet there was never, ever going to be anyone who said, if you're doing it wrong, we're going to do something about it. Bar on the corner from me had to close. All the bartenders got COVID. They had to start their own Facebook page because their patrons were getting COVID. You, you got to have enforcement along with, like I said, let's promote. Casey said, there's a way to do it safely and let's promote those businesses that are doing it safely. People are going to want to patronize businesses that know that they're looking out for them. So I, I think the leadership was lacking on that. Yes, it's a difficult time, but I thought the city council could have done a lot better with saying, here's how we're going to, here's the policies we're going to put in place. And if you break those policies, maybe your liquor license will get suspended for a couple of weeks, but there's going to be consequences. Because just blaming Gavin Newsom is, it doesn't help anybody. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, so now we're at this part where we're going to do closing statements. And again, I'm going to just sort of go random back in order and we'll be starting with Jeff Moran. I'll give you a moment to get ready, Jeff. But, and then go Dan, John, Casey. So we'll go through the list of everybody in that fashion and you will have two minutes. And we are doing awesome on our time and I think our audience appreciates that and I know we all appreciate it as well. So Jeff, would you like to start us off with your closing statement, please?
Thank you, Diane. So this is my first time running for city council or any elected office. And I'm not a politician, but I do have extensive corporate management experience. I'm a proven leader, both in the public sector, the private sector, and I take a collaborative approach to identify and resolve issues. I will fight if elected for local control. I think it's critical as a city, particularly as a charter city. I'm a strong business advocate. You know, we, one of the first questions was about revenue. We can't tax our way out of everything. It, it doesn't work. California as a whole have seen this. We're one of the most taxed or the taxed state in the country and yet we have all the homelessness, all the poverty, everything else that we're dealing with here in Huntington Beach. So let's work together to create incentivized business and create additional revenue through that avenue, not tax. Over the years, I've built a tremendous amount of relationships through local, state and federal, as well as city staffs throughout the county. You know, I have, because of that, I, I've built a lot of trust because of my performance. I have numerous endorsements, including Senator John Morlock, Orange County Sheriff, number one cop in Orange County, Don Barnes, Orange County Supervisors, Michelle Steele and Don Wagner.
Don Barnes, Orange County Supervisors, Michelle Steele and Don Wagner, and now the Orange County Republican Party. As a council member, I would strongly utilize all these relationships to help resolve the issues that we face in Huntington Beach. I'm number eleven on the ballot, hopefully your number one vote. JeffMoranForHB.com is the website and thank you for your time. Thank you, Chamber.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Alrighty, and Dan.
Thank you, uh, thank you, everyone, for participating. This has been fantastic to hear everyone's thoughts and ideas on how they want to help make Huntington Beach better because I know we all love Huntington Beach and that's why we live here and that's why we want to help lead it. Uh, but we're going to need folks that can really hit the ground running, that understand how the city works, that knows where the bathroom is on the fourth floor, uh, that has been going to council meetings for years, uh, and understands how public policy moves forward in our city, how to build that coalition. On the planning commission, you know, folks, if we want to move something forward, I try to bring four or five folks along with me, seven if we can, right? We try to get to this compromise uh, to make either projects better or to vote down bad projects that our residents don't want and that don't meet our codes or asking us to help make a project pencil. Um, really, really, um, uh, you know, working with our residents, working with staff, working with our businesses is going to be critical as we come out of COVID uh, at the end of, at probably, hopefully, middle of next year, probably the end of next year, but we just can't. Uh, we've got three new people coming to council and we really need to make sure we elect people uh, that aren't going to have to wait six, eight months to figure out how everything works, how a meeting runs, what the Brown Act is, um, and how to essentially, um, you know, get the job done. Planning Commission is a great set of training wheels for that, you know, we've been able to get a lot of things done there, um, really make some great impacts in the community uh, and really get us help to get us back into compliance. And I'm asking for your vote to to promote up to the the city council here to be able to help change some of the policies that I've banged my head against the wall at planning commission because our hands are tied on some of the the votes that we've had to take. Um, you know, it's, it's going to be a a really straining two years as we come into budget cuts. Um, you know, I want to make sure that I leave Huntington Beach uh, and wait for my daughter to uh, really reflect on and for my daughter to really be able to be proud that she lives here. Um, so that's why I'm running for city council is to really take that leadership role that seems to have been kind of lacking for the last ten years and and push forward. I've been endorsed by our congressman, our South County or South Huntington Beach Assemblywoman, uh, several city council, former and current city council members. So I ask for their support and your support too, I'm number fourteen on the ballot, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan. Okay, and Mr. Briscoe.
Unmuted as commanded. I'm the only elected official here. I say that because I have the experience and and existing background going into this disaster. But I'll do umbrage to the other two folks who've been elected to office heretofore. It's a disaster. There ain't going to be any money. Whoever's on the city council is going to have to deal with cuts, no money. Because this council gets its money from the state of California, uh, based on the underlying financial funding formulas. In addition to that, the underfunded retirement systems that we pay into are going to be demanding increasingly ever larger contributions from employers. I'll use my school board as an example, within the next five years, almost twenty-five cents out of every dollar from our budget is going to go to pay existing pension expenses just to be underfunded and break even. So all these things going on are a big problem. So whoever's in this seat needs to know how to handle budget disasters and debacles and work their way through it. And I have the tools to do that because I've lived through the previous great recession in my school board role. Beyond that, our parks are shabby and they need to be brought up to speed. We talked about that earlier. The homeless problem is big, we need to address the underlying causes of homelessness, that substance use and abuse and mental illness. And giving people a free cot to sleep on at night doesn't do a very good job addressing those problems. I have some specific solutions for that I can address later if anybody's interested. Our police feet on the street are fabulous and fantastic, our police administration, not so much so. We have a police chief who's never been out working with his people, with his guys. This is not good management and this needs to stop. That concludes my comments.
John, okay, and now we'll move on to Casey, Thomas and Gracie. Casey.
Yes, thank you guys for the opportunity opportunity to introduce myself and speak today. Although this is my first time running for um, elected office, I do have experience with city hall, um, being on the investment advisory board, the finance commission, and then more so uh, through my business and commercial real estate, uh, navigating through, you know, planning commissions, city hall for antonyms, et cetera. Um, I truly feel to dig ourselves out of this crisis, we need to approach it from a a private business perspective, you know, interwoven, interwoven with obviously elected public office. Um, we need to get creative to to solve our budget shortfalls, we need to work with the the private community, the small business community. Um, I'm very for local control, preserving our constitutional rights to allow us to to govern and regulate the city we see fit, not have some, you know, one size fits all mandate from Sacramento, that's big for me. Um, I want to ensure that local citizens that are invested in the well-being of the community are responsible for steering our uh, city's future for uh, you know, years to come. So I I feel it's important that we elect local citizens, um, that are beholden, that are not beholden to outside special interest groups. Really want to focus on reviving the economy, like I said before, giving our small businesses the the support they need to thrive, get creative, ensure there's safety protocols in place so they can operate their businesses safely, get our sales tax revenues back up, our hotel reservation fees. Um, and then, like I said, being a resident of Southeast Huntington Beach, um, want to ensure those big ticket items, AES, ASCON, tank farms, et cetera, uh, remain in focus as well as dealing with the homeless issue, um, getting that shelter up as fast as we can, work with the county since the homelessness is under their purview to make sure they live up to their responsibilities. Um, thank you for your time, I'm number twelve on the ballot and I respectfully request your vote for city council, thank you. Oh, and you can go to my website, CaseyMickieHB.com for more information, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Casey. And Thomas, you are next.
Thank you, everyone, uh, my name is Thomas Leparn, I'm number three on the ballot for Huntington Beach City Council. I'd like to say thank you to Diane and the rest of the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this again. Uh, I'm deeply involved with our community, uh, between AYSO Soccer, Huntington Valley Little League, Boys and Girls Club, Bolster Chica Junior Stewards, uh, Huntington Beach High School Alumni Association. Everything I do is to give back, I roll up my sleeves and I get out there and I do. I don't talk, I get out there and I make sure that my blood, sweat and tears gives back to my community. I've been doing that for the last thirty-two years as a volunteer here. My major focus is going to be on the homeless issue. If we don't get that cleaned up, Huntington Beach is not going to be a go-to destination. People have to want to come to our city and therefore you will get those transient tax from the hotels or people staying in our city, buying our food, eating at our restaurants and our bars. Those are the type of things we need to make clean, make safe and make fair for our community. Talking about Southeast Huntington Beach, AES, ASCON, the Magnolia Tank Farm, that stuff needs to stop. We need to protect our environmental assets because once we build it, we can't unbuild it. We're not Miami Beach, we're not Santa Monica, we're Huntington Beach. And I'm going to make sure that everyone knows that when I'm on city council. I love this town, I have four beautiful children and my wife of seventeen years, that we're going to be here for the long term. We need local control, we need local people making local decisions, not looking on to their next job or looking up to their next elected position. We need people, if we can't fix ourselves and be personally, personally responsible and personal stewards of our city, you have no business running for city hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Thomas. And Gracie.
So I'd like to start by saying that the challenges we're experiencing right now are community challenges, not individual ones. And we won't be able to resolve them unless we work together. Um, we need to maintain focus on the community safety and the growing population, coming together locally with the community, but also forging a strong relationship with our county supervisors in order to have the best collaboration and services for those who need additional services beyond just being put in a shelter. Um, we're looking at an anticipated drop in revenue of approximately twenty million dollars so far due to the pandemic. And if we're going to work together as a community to make it through these challenges, we need to make sure our residents are fully informed about the details and what it is they should expect. Uh, with that information will come trust and I believe we can maintain more of a calm uh, interaction towards each other. Um, as a finance commissioner, I'm familiar with the inner workings of city hall and I will be affected day one as your councilperson. I share the community's pleas for help and I don't feel we're being listened to. And I'd like to change that by being your representative and being the voice for the residents. And in closing, I ask for your support and in return, I promise my unwavering commitment to making our city the safest and best suburban community we've all grown to love. So I'm Gracie Vandemark and I am lucky number thirteen on your ballot.
Alrighty, thank you very much, Gracie. And Eric.
Am I already unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so I've lived here since seventy-two, I've been here my whole life, my parents live here, my sister lives here, my wife and I live here. I've been married for fifteen years, I love this city. Um, people say, let's make uh, Huntington Beach great again, I don't think it ever stopped being great. There's always room to improve, of course, but I mean, we're surf city, the the city's going to be facing some tough challenges and I may not have been on the planning commission, I may not have been in finance and this is my first time running for city council. But I'm pretty smart, I'm a teacher, I've got my bachelor's, I got my credential. Um, I can figure some things out, I can find the bathroom. Um, I I want to bring everyone together, there's way more that unites us than divides us. Um, I I think we can, we can get together and and stop the the bickering and the polarization um, and bring the city together and look for these solutions. It's going to be tough, we're all going to have to hitch up our britches and we're all going to have to take a little bit of a haircut. But I want to get businesses open safely, I want to promote businesses that are uh, working safely. I want to address the homeless issues and I want to make sure our beaches are great because, you know, for someone who surfs like two or three days a week, um, I I have a big interest in making sure our beaches remain clean and safe. And for the most part, they are, our guards do a great job, our PD, our FD, they all do a great job. So I feel safe here in Huntington, but we can improve, of course, but um, I know you're going to be taking a chance. My last name is Silkenson, I'm not hard to find on the ballot. I think I'm number nine, although I I I'm not really sure, I think I'm somewhere in the middle. But uh, vote for me, silkforHB.com, I'm going to be doing a bunch of events, you can come out and see me, you can reach me and that's how I'm going to be when I'm on the council, I'm going to be in the community leading, I'm going to be out there, you'll be able to find me downtown. Thanks a lot for doing this event, appreciate it, thanks to all the candidates too.
Thank you very much, Eric. Alrighty, so our next group here is going to be Sonia, Brian and Tito. So Sonia, let's get you, there you go.
I'm here and I apologize for not having the camera still. Okay, I'm Sonia Green, um, I'm just going to let you know, I'm going to fight elected or not. Um, I've watched a lot of the city council throughout the years talk, but not um, much done for the residents' concerns. I've been a business owner for twenty-plus years, twenty-three years exactly, um, I've placed twenty-five thousand people into gainful employment. My ability to relate to our community and corporations is a strong advantage to allow me to give my community and the the voice that they need and to represent them extremely well. I have, I have listened to their concerns with the high-density development causing parking issues in primary and secondary issues uh, of their neighborhoods. So I just wanted to let everyone know that um, I'm here to fight for you, I I'm one of you and our concerns are important and we have to be heard. Um, I, it's not enough to talk about it, it's not enough to plan out fiscally, it's not enough. We have to work together, we are a community, we are together as one and we have to to really believe and absorb that as well. I'm fourth on the ballot, you can visit me, sonyagreen.org. I hope to earn your voice, your vote, I am very excited to be your representative as we work together because there is no great leader without the team involved, we have to all work together. God bless and I hope to be your city councilman and vote for me, I'm number four.
Thank you, Sonia. And Brian.
There we go, I finally got to work, okay. Um, firstly, thank you guys for for having us all here today. Oh, of course, the dog barks right when uh, everyone are finishing here, so I'll have to, I'll have to push through that. Um, so I I'm thankful for the opportunity to run, humbled by all the support we got. I think the number one thing we we need right now is someone who's going to bring our community together, uh, the people of Huntington Beach, uh, they know I'm prepared, uh, they want change and they know that I'll deliver that change. Uh, one thing that I realized two years ago when I run, when I ran, was that uh, when I talked to voters, because we talked to, you know, tens of thousands over the last couple of years, um, I had to vote with each of the other fourteen candidates, people told me they'd voted for me and, you know, Dan was running, Billy was running. I take pride in that because it shows that um, people know my heart's in the right place. Uh, people know that why I came here originally, it was in two thousand and seven when my mother had cancer. Um, I fell in love with this this place, it's the one place in my life where I feel at peace when I walk on the beach and I'm ready now to defend this community, this is where my public service is supposed to be. Uh, I'm going to work tirelessly on our behalf, I'm going to bring our community together. I'm not number fifteen on the ballot like I was two years ago, which costs us probably thousands and thousands of vote, so I'm uh, number one on the ballot, you can see it up here. Uh, we're grateful for that, that luck of the draw as well. Uh, we feel really great about this, about this opportunity, um, as a local business owner, someone who's taken on special interests here locally, people know that I'm prepared. Um, they know that I'm going to deliver, like I said, the results that they want and uh, I'm happy, I'm 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 thrilled to be running this time, I know some people have some questions about my youth, uh, partially because I have a baby face, yes, I know, and that's okay. Uh, but they know my heart's in the right place, um, and they know that I'm wiser behind, beyond my ears, right? Uh, so BrianBurley.com is the website, phone number is seven one four eight two four zero zero three two, that is seven one four eight two four zero zero three two. Reach out to me personally, I'll meet with you, I'll talk with you, I'd appreciate your support, number one on the ballot.
Thank you very much, Brian. Okay, and Tito. Oops, we need to get you unmuted there, Tito.
Are we preparing now, is that better? Okay. As a member of Huntington Beach uh, council, I'll devote and serve it to our community. I've been fortunate to reach uh, the, my professional mixed martial arts business owner and entrepreneur. There is a sharp focus that I apply my maximum effort to accomplish my goals and objectives. My work ethic is unsurpassed and has been secret to my success. It's all in a worldwide acclaim. I will hire the city on behalf of our community and need to be addressed and direct. And I have seen a look for helplessness, abandonment in their eyes indirect of our overseen by homelessness. I promise to them and promise each and collective interest of our community to make sure our beach of Huntington is not only safe, clean, but protected to make it great. I bear to differ if someone says Huntington Beach was never great, well, nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-five, we're the safest city in America and this is my goal to make it happen again. Thank you very much, you can see me on Tito Ortiz ForCityCouncil.com, once again, that's Tito ForHBCC.com. I promise I will not let my community down, uh, born and raised here in Huntington Beach and I plan on living here for a long, long time to take care of my children, my grandchildren and my community because this is my job and I've devoted my life for our city of Huntington Beach. I ain't going anywhere. Thank you so much, I appreciate you guys' time and for all the other candidates, you guys did an amazing job and hopefully, once we fill these three seats, welcome, join and make Huntington Beach great, but do it with a team atmosphere with a leader like myself. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you, Tito. Alrighty, and so next we'll move on to Billy, Matthew and Amory. Oop, Billy, you need to unmute yourself.
I want to thank all of, all the folks that participated today, there's an old saying, don't tell me, show me. When I was on city council, I fought hard for the citizens and the residents of our city, the small businesses. Um, I fought for our children with a non-toxic gap parks, I also advocated for a made, made an American procurement policy, which was pushed back by both Republicans and Democrats. And upon that, when I investigated that, I saw there were seventy-seven vehicles bought over a two-year period, approximately seventy-seven vehicles. When I asked how many of those vehicles were purchased in the city of Huntington Beach, I was appalled to find out it was seven. So that changed, so we continue to make change. When it comes to homelessness, some people talk, some people telling, some, some people think, I've done it, doing it, will continue to do it. I know what it takes to fish, to fix this issue. Taking over five thousand women and children off the streets, up to over fifteen hundred women. Taken over 5,000 women and children off the streets, up to over 1,500 women find work, unified over 300 children with their mothers. I have done it. When our businesses were under, under attack downtown, I walked and supported the small business owners downtown. Never again should we see our businesses boarded up. That is totally unacceptable. So moving forward, we will have challenges ahead. We will have physical challenges ahead. Our revenue's down. Our hotel revenue's down. So we need good physical management to make this work. Now, nobody knows what's best for the city of Huntington Beach rather than the people that live here. I believe in local control, and that's what we should strongly advocate. People that don't live in our city don't know what's going on. So I'm a very, very big proponent of local control. So moving forward, there will be no more defunding of the police while I'm a city council member. I moved to this city because of the police department and their proactive approach towards crime. And we need to be able to make a strong police department once again. We need to increase officers to be more proactive to solve the criminal issues in our city. Thank you, Billy O'Connell for HB.com, 714-943-0223. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Alrighty, Matthew?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. You have 15 candidates to choose from, and the top three that you choose from are going to win. A dozen have not held public office before, and so what I offer is balance. The most experienced high school board, city council, state office as well, to be able to balance my experience with folks who have different and new and fresh perspectives on the Huntington Beach City Council. I am very concerned, and we have had this problem in the past, of a push of a liberal agenda within our city. And there are actually three candidates that are backed by the Democratic Party that are in this race. I have opposed and will continue to oppose plastic bag ban, paper bag fee, styrofoam ban, plastic straw ban, municipal gun control, rent control, fireworks ban in our city, and I'll defend our beach bonfire rings within the city of Huntington Beach. I've been described by the LA Times as conservative, pro-business, and unafraid. Huntington Beach is an outstanding place to live, and I want Huntington Beach to continue to be a great place to live, work, and play. I'd like to ask you to please join Senator John Morlock in supporting me, also past mayors, Del Glaze, Matney, May, Sullivan, Boer, Carcio, Don Hanson, and even former council member Devin Dwyer, our local leaders like Janet Nguyen, Diane Dixon, Travis Allen, and also school board trustees like my former colleagues, Michael Simons and Dwayne Dishno. I respectfully ask for one of your three votes for Huntington Beach City Council. Please vote Matthew Harper for Huntington Beach City Council.
Okay, thank you very much, Matthew. And so we will be finishing off with Amory, Oscar, and Natalie. So Amory, Mr. Hanson?
Hello. Please feel free to contact me at 714-371-5578, or amory.hanson2016@gmail.com. Vote for Mr. Amory Hanson, number five on the ballot, a historic choice.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanson. Oscar?
Again, hi, everyone. My name is Oscar Rodriguez, and I'm number 15th on the ballot. This is my first time running for city council. I'm very excited. I have the experience and capacity to take on the challenges our city faces. I thank the Chamber of Commerce and Diane for the opportunity to be here today, to share our, our ideas to make our city a better place to live and raise a family. I will also like to thank the voters for being involved and being on the Zoom call. As a longtime resident, I'm very invested in our community. I have fought for our environment locally. I serve on the South Coast Air Quality Management District Environmental Justice Board. I want to refocus our budget and, and invest in our youth, so they can live, work, and raise a family in the city. Young professionals like myself, like, cannot afford to live here, and I think that's a long-term problem. I also want to refocus our, refocus and focus our socioeconomically disadvantaged communities in our policymaking. I support policy that are equitable and justice for all. I'm open to meeting with anybody. Please contact me, Oscar, oscarforHB.com. And again, my website is oscarforHB.com. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, I will not just ask for your vote. I hope to earn it. I really do. So thank again. Thank you for your, thank you for listening to us, and I hope to sit on the council pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Oscar. Okay, and Natalie?
In this moment, we are met with many concurrent and unprecedented challenges, but the crack is the place where the light gets in. I know from personal experience that disruption and discomfort can bring opportunities for awareness, transformation, healing, and resilience. Who's going to mobilize us to work together, to bridge the divides and to make the difficult choices? Who do we want to be as a city and as a community? A friend and local religious leader recently said that we belong to one another. How would we act if we believed that to be true? Let's reimagine our story together, then let's make that a reality through solid, evidence-based policy and collaboration. I will provide a voice of reason and common sense, a fresh approach from someone who wants to work together and find a way forward through active listening and good planning that represents the needs of our community. Together, we can address challenges, including our community and business recovery and economic development, through and beyond the pandemic. Together, we can address the social issues that affect our collective quality of life. We can build an inclusive and engaged community through dialogue. We can address homelessness, including addressing public safety issues, building a shelter with wraparound services and human dignity, creating permanent supportive housing, mental health services, addressing trauma, drug rehabilitation, and of course, homeless prevention. We can take care of our infrastructure, our environment, and our beautiful coastline for future generations. We might disagree about many things, but we must agree on basic principles, including how we will deal with one another. Let's join together to achieve our common goals and truly become one HB. I'm honored to be endorsed by former mayors Ralph Bauer and Shirley Detloff, and by hundreds of community members, teachers, and public safety personnel, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Support Natalie Mosher, number 10 on the ballot, to build a brighter future for our city. To find out more and to share, visit Natalie, number 4HB.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Natalie. And that does conclude our fifth candidate forum for city council. Really, really appreciate everyone's patience. We pretty much ended on time. Very pleased with our timeliness of answers and participation. So for the audience out there and the panelists, we will be having this available for view at later times, and you can direct people to the Chamber website. This is hosted by the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce and sponsored by the Robert Mayer Leadership Academy. For those who are interested in participating in city and government or volunteerism, it's a great place to start, because you get connected with the right people at the right time if you want to participate in the Leadership Academy. So highly recommend it. And so we'll just say good night, or good night, good afternoon now to everybody, and thank you all very much. And if this is, is received well, we may just try this again soon. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Diane. Great job. Have a wonderful day.